Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. It is the ten o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board solax is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All privates may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So I will call this meeting to order. And Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes, I'm here.
Supervisor Cowan?
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Here.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
I am here. We will now take a bit for a moment of reflection. Thank you, and now Bob, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. Please stand. Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, introduction of new employees.
We have none that I'm aware of.
Okay. County Council, actions from closed session.
Yes, in the case of Belcher v. County of Del Norte, case number eighteen CB zero seven three seven nine RMI, the board voted unanimously to approve a settlement in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. That was a motion by Supervisor Gitlin and a second by Supervisor Howard.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting. Are there any such items? Seeing none, we will now receive brief reports from supervisors on county committees as such. And we'll start with Supervisor Berkowitz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we last met, I invited Dr. Raywall to a Rotary Club meeting as the main speaker. He noted that those who continue to be high-risk for the virus should continue to shelter in place. In other words, stay at home as much as possible. The drive-up testing site at the high school is fully functioning with an appointment. And for phase three, we'll be looking for further guidance from the state, according to Dr. Raywall. Lately, we've been hearing a lot about defunding the police. I want to make it perfectly clear that I'm not for that at all. When you look at it in the clear daylight, defunding the police is a crazy idea at best and a stupid idea at most. Defunding the police makes about as much sense as reducing sentences for those who are already in prison because they have the virus. That strategy exposes the rest of the population to the virus. Lastly, I continue to hear from constituents and businesses about when the county will return to normal with businesses able to open up. I hope that Dr. Raywall will continue to give us an update at every meeting. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to start off with a meeting that we had via Zoom for the CSAC Rural Caucus. The meeting was held specifically to discuss issues with potential withholding of funds for some of the counties that opened prematurely against the governor's orders. Specifically, Siskiyouba and Glen and Tahima moved ahead with a lot of reopening and had received letters from Kalocha and other areas of our government threatening withholding of funds from the state. That pretty much took the entire hour discussion with CSAC Rural Caucus. And it was interesting to pay attention to, but nothing's come of those threats at this point in time. Didn't have much to add to the conversation as Del Norte County chose not to pursue that course of action. Instead, pursued the course of action as advised by both the governor and Dr. Raywall, who has the ultimate authority in those decision-making processes. Been working very closely with Yana Valakovic from the UC Cooperative Extension on investigative searches here in District Three, specific to Sudden Oak Disease, and then also had a solid waste meeting with Supervisor Cowan, where we discussed various issues affecting us legislatively and how those best carry forward. I will note that Ted Ward was able to be appointed to a special commission, which will truly help us in our fight against some of the current legislation that could disable rural counties significantly in complying with that legislation. Also attended with Supervisor Hemmingson a North Coast Resource Partnership meeting, where we approved twelve pilot projects for fuels reduction and attended yesterday with Supervisor Cowan a public safety two-by-two-by-two with the city, of course, the county, and the school district on a potential tax measure around public safety for both the city and the county, and some conflicts that are currently arising with a bond measure that the school district is looking to push. And also participated, and it was a fun event with the summer story hour last week, Thursday, reading children's stories, and I'm also happy that Supervisor Hemmingson did that also. It's all part of our three-read twenty-three program. Glad to see it's still alive and well in our community. That's the end of my report, Supervisor.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, were you calling on me, Mr. Chairman? I didn't hear.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. The good news is our county is beginning to return to normals. To present date, there is one active case of the virus, no new cases at Pelican Bay State Prison, no hospitalizations, and no deaths, which is all great news. This past week, nail salons and massage therapy and other related businesses have reopened. Short-term vacation rentals and motels have also reopened. Motel limited occupancy is currently fifty percent, but will move to one-hundred percent capacity by the end of the week. Campgrounds, RV parks, and outdoor recreation locations have also been reopened. Yet to open are the fitness centers, bars, and wineries, which are set to open in mid-July. The news is encouraging as the summer is just starting and important revenue streams are reopening, allowing the county to fund future operations. Significant financial impact has been realized in the county. I had the opportunity to look into some of these realized damages of the virus on our county budget. There are many unanswered questions, and our board will be discussing the projected three-point-two million-dollar deficit. The rollover funds are still uncertain. To compare twenty-nineteen twenty-twenty budget rollover, approximately one-point-six million was rolled over in the current budget. The one percent sales tax is only slightly down from last year. It's about five percent. So there's still very much unknown, still to be determined, and will keep you apprised as to our new budget, which will be discussed a little later in this meeting. Our private pick group met last week. Pick stands for Pride in Community. This group of volunteers with weeder eaters will begin to address the poorly maintained curbs and sidewalks in and around District One, which essentially are city streets. The city has suffered significant loss of revenue from the shutdown caused by the virus. Effective July first begins a new fiscal period, and revenue streams for both city and county operations, as we mentioned, have been impacted. Our group of pickers will be here to assist. If you're interested in volunteering for this Pride in Community effort, please contact me. As Supervisor Berkowitz mentions, law enforcement is under siege in California and America in general, of course. Recently, almost one million was cut from the Arcata Police Department. The City of Arcata ultimately cut one-point-three million from its budget due to the loss of revenue because of the COVID-nineteen virus. The vast majority of those cuts were made in local law enforcement. These draconian budgets cuts are dangerous and most certainly are not in the best interests of our public. A little bit letter and open comments, we'll be hearing a letter dealing with this from constituent Jeffrey McFadden, calling for a resolution of opposition for any efforts to defund law enforcement in our county. And the City of Portland also has cut its modest three-hundred, excuse me, two-hundred-and-thirty-two-million-dollar police budget from its about sixteen million, from its five-point-six-billion-dollar annual budget. It's disheartening to acknowledge so many city and county boards of governance have surrendered to this loud and aggressive voices that call for the defunding of law enforcement. It's time to stand up and show our support for our local law enforcement agencies, which serve Del Norte County, which include the Del Norte County Sheriff's Department, Crescent City Police Department, Del Norte County Probation, Urock Tribal Police, California Highway Patrol, State and National Parks Warden, Fish and Game Wardens, the United States Coast Guard, and any other agencies that serve in law enforcement in our county that I've yet to mention, who, including the US Forest Service in Gasky, which also has a select group of law enforcement. The men and women who selfishly serve to protect us and maintain peace and enforce our law and ordinances should be recognized and honored. Mr. Chairman, as the duly elected supervisor from District One, I am requesting that this resolution of support be placed on our next agenda, which is Tuesday, July fourteenth, to show our appreciation for the difficult task our law enforcement officers face each and every day they serve. Bullet points to acknowledge are the dangerous nature of police work and law enforcement. Every day, those individuals selflessly serve. The sworn mission is to protect and serve, enforcing all local ordinances, state, and federal laws, and acknowledging that there are just over seven-hundred thousand individuals in our country, of three-hundred-and-twenty-five million, who provide this thin line between civilization and chaos. So, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request a resolution of support be placed on the July fourteenth agenda, acknowledge and appreciation and recognition of the men and women who serve in all capacities of law enforcement in Del Norte County. And that's my report.
Thank you for that. Vice Chairman Cowan. Cowan.
Thank you, Chairman. Since we last met, I had a local behavioral health meeting where we discussed procedures and the changes that have been made due to COVID-nineteen. I also talked about Mental Health Services Act three-year plan, the county jail project is moving forward, and our yearly report. I had an assessment call with Joy Keller-Wildman and Ben Zukowski regarding Last Chance Grade, just going over everything that has been done to date and moving forward and how that looks. We had a Visitors Bureau meeting where we went over last year's number and how COVID-nineteen will potentially affect our second quarter here. I had a solid waste meeting, as Supervisor Howard mentioned. Then we are continuing to do our Green Ribbon Awards, and this past week, we gave one to Humboldt Moving and Storage in their participation. Also, they got some K rails out at the landfill property because we've been having people, having problems with people who went onto the property. And I'll have to agree with Supervisor Howard with Ted's appointment, Mr. Ward's appointment. It's going to be a big help having that local person to advocate for us because what they're trying to bring down from the state can really hurt us here in our rural communities. Participated in the city-county school two-by-two yesterday regarding public safety. Certainly something we've all been talking about for the past year or so, and moving forward and looking at a tax measure that would help our public safety. I think that's something that just goes unsaid, that yes, we're all in support of taking care of and looking out for our public safety. Last, I want to congratulate my son, as well as all the twenty-twenty graduates that graduated this past week and before. Del Norte High School, kudos. You guys did an excellent job with graduation. There was a lot of uproar about change, but folks, change is good, and our family had a great time, and I think a lot of the kids did as well. So, yes, it was different, but it certainly was a well, it was a very nice program. So congratulations to all our twenty-twenty graduates, and that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I had a few things going on, had a whale entanglement risk assessment meeting. I participated in a Last Chance Grade interview on how things are going and what needs to be changed. As, yeah, and we'll see how that plays out, but it was pretty informative on both sides, I think. And as Supervisor Howard said, I did, along with some of my family, participate in Storytime. It was great fun. I was happy to do it. Had a meeting with the Fish and Wildlife, as well as other stakeholders, on the risk assessment management plan regulations that are upcoming to impact the Dungeons Crab Fishery. I had agenda review. We had our first RCRC Zoom meeting. We haven't met for some time. It was very long, probably six and a half hours or so, just catching up on a lot of things. We had an ordinate amount of discussion on sending a letter to the governor. We're still working on that. As Supervisor Howard said, we did have an NCRP meeting, a North Coast Resource Partnership meeting. So I won't go into that. And I just want to clarify some things that were said. We do have a hospitalization for the COVID-one, and things are far from normal. Or, you know, I think we're, I think we need to be more vigilant now than ever before as things start opening up. We need to be more cognizant of the spread and how we, how we go about our business in public by wearing a mask, I think is very important. And as far as the support of our law enforcement, I don't think this board has ever wavered. We have been one-hundred percent behind our law enforcement. There has been no efforts or indications of anybody defunding our law enforcement. I have no intention of putting a proclamation or a resolution on the agenda at this time, unless there are three members of the board that would like to do that. At this point, I see no need to put a resolution on for the board at this time. If someone comes forward and is expecting us to defund that department, I think they're going to be sorely mistaken. So with that, we will move on to, we're not to our time, so let's move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. A second.
All right, I have a motion by Supervisor Howard, second by Vice Chair Cowan, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public comment, Kylie, on the consent agenda item?
Um, I'm going to give it just a second, Chair. And I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion or questions, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to move on to, were there any proclamations or resolutions in our county that we need to read? I don't remember seeing any.
Not that I recall.
Thank you. We're going to move on to General Government, item number eleven, approve and adopt the final fiscal year twenty-twenty twenty-one airport authority budget, as adopted by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority Board of Commission. Nurse? Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the twenty-twenty twenty-twenty-one fiscal year or airport authority budget as adopted by the Border Coast Regional Airport.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. We'll move on to item number twelve, which is to approve and adopt the memorandum of understanding between the County of Del Norte and the Del Norte County Sheriff's Employees Association.
So.
Go ahead, Jay.
So the report in front of you outlines the negotiations that culminated about thirty days ago. It is a three-year agreement with the Sheriff Employees Association, similar to other bargaining groups. Highlights include a cost-of-living adjustment over the three years of three percent, two percent, and two percent. There were language changes that now make the SEA agreement consistent with other agreements with the other bargaining groups, whether unrepresented or represented, including travel per diem and leave. Not a lot of significant changes to the agreement overall. And ultimately, the Sheriff Employees Association voted to ratify, and this would be the opportunity for the board to take such action also, and that is the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
And second, that motion?
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
I'm going to give it a second. Chair, I am not seeing any at this time.
Thank you, would you?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think this goes to state your earlier comments during your board report that this board is not only willing to, but also to express through this memorandum of understanding today with the Sheriff's Employee Association, our support and continued support for making them whole here in this community. And I think some of the discussions that we'll have here in the coming weeks, specific to the initiatives that Lori Cowan also mentioned, that support is going to be critical to the future of the Sheriff's Department and public safety throughout Del Norte County and Crescent City. And I think the board, through this, through this start, will definitely put our support behind any public safety officers, but in specifically our sheriff's departments. I just wanted to make that very clear to the public today.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Anybody else, Scott, anything else?
Chairman, to the point of, to the point of Supervisor Howard, I would like to point out that as we go through these agreements, you know, obviously, there is a commitment by the Board of Supervisors whenever we have one of these commitments to continue to fund at the level that the agreements stipulate, sorry. And for public safety overall, not just the sheriff employees, but also our district attorney probation and juvenile hall, you know, all of those combined are about seventy percent of our budget, our general fund budget. So, you know, the commitment is there and has always been there by the board. It's just a matter of trying to balance all the needs of all of our public employees, which provide all of the services that people enjoy on a daily basis. And it's been even more difficult as we've gone through the COVID emergency because we, as a county government, have not shut down completely. We have services that have been provided all the way through, some that are provided more directly to the public and others through telework. But as a county government, we're essential. And for the most vulnerable part of our population, it's extremely important to note that our employees are out there working for them, and that very much includes our public safety, including our sheriff's deputies and our health and human service workers, all of them that are dealing with the needs of our community.
Yep, thank you, Jay. And with that, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you, yeah. There's always someone out there that wants to create controversy where there is none. But I think we'll move beyond that. And let's go to a public comment, Kylie. Is there any written public comment?
I do have a written public comment letter. It's two pages long, so bear with me. Did you want me to read that letter first, or do you want me to check online?
Yeah, let's go ahead and read it. Is it over three minutes?
I didn't time it, honestly.
Okay.
But I will do my best to keep it under three minutes. It's from Jeff McCaden. McCaden?
I think we all got it, but go ahead.
Yeah, and it says it's regarding public comment and support of law and order in Del Norte County and Crescent City. And it said, "We have all been inundated in recent weeks with mainstream media-driven sensationalism regarding the Black Lives Matter phenomenon. Those of us who exercise caution, discernment, and independent thinking realize that the incessant media coverage has more to do with ratings, ad revenue, and left-leaning politics than the actual subject at hand. The bulk of our American public forced into isolation by the pandemic, constantly bombarded by televised yellow journalism, and images of demonstrations, riots, and looting have demanded change. The radicals of the left have chosen partial defunding of law enforcement or the outright elimination of community police entirely. Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone, I'm sorry, autonomous zone, Seattle has become a poster child for this philosophy, with both of the mayor of that city and the governor of Washington refusing to take action. Indeed, spineless populist liberal politicians throughout the United States, along with the Democrat-dominated US Congress, have all supported defunding a dismantling law enforcement as the chosen solution. One need only look toward their model utopia in Seattle to see the results. The summer of love that the mayor of Seattle envisioned for the Antifa police free zone has become a summer of rape. These leftist radicals have armed themselves with unregistered assault rifles and blockaded their zone with checkpoints to process anyone entering or leaving. This being done by so-called liberals who lobby to restrict access to registered firearms for increasing numbers of law-abiding citizens and to open the US borders to anybody who chooses to enter. The art posted on almost every wall in this street fair contains spray-painted slogans of violence and anarchy. Their chosen laws are ill-defined but dispensed swiftly by mob beatings and recently by burning down an occupied law center. They have segregated by race and supported forced work crews conscripted by race. The present warlord, a local Seattle rapper named Daz, claimed his position by violence and has secured it in some way. The Capitol Hill Autonomous Zone, CHOP, has now become CHOP, the Capitol Hill Occupied Protest. They dropped autonomous zone from the name because none of their members wants to work in the lawless nature of their summer of love, precluded any outside support. Truckers would not make deliveries, emergency medical and fire personnel would not respond, and police were not allowed to answer calls related to rape and battery. Thanks to support from the liberal government, liberal government of Seattle, CHOP's portable toilets are once again being serviced by public sanitation workers and an endless Thanks to support from the liberal government, liberal government of Seattle, CHOP's portable toilets are once again being serviced by public sanitation workers, and an endless lease supply of bean sprouts and tofu are delivered to hungry vegans. We in Delmar County should stand resolutely against such defunding measures. Days ago, the state of California released over thirty-five hundred convicted felons from their prisons. Sacramento is in support of law enforcement defunding measures. I ask that a resolution be drafted by both our supportive law enforcement defunding measures. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I ask that a resolution be drafted by both our Delmar County Board of Supervisors and local city council of Crescent City vowing so to oppose implementation of any executive orders by the premier of the People's Republic of California or legislation by the Politburo of this state attempting to defund a hap- defund or hamper active law enforcement in Delmar County and the city of Crescent City. We should continue to honor the courage and commitment of our first responders during these media-driven urban populist revolts and take a stand against leftist intrusions from our state government. In response to police defunding and lack of support from cowardly urban politicians, seasoned frontline law enforcement personnel throughout our country are resigning either in protest or in response to unrealistic local measures hampering their ability to do their job in a safe manner. Delmar County cannot afford the loss of our, of our law enforcement personnel. Indeed, we already constantly hemorrhage officers to larger and better funded agencies. Instead of allowing state-defunding policies to dictate our actions, we should provide an annual retention bonus to encourage seasoned officers to remain in service in our county. This money could be easily diverted from our fat, bloated, and counterproductive Delmar Unified School District. The county of Delmar has long been ignored and favored California's urbanized densely packed metropolitan enclaves of Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Diego, and the San Francisco Bay Area. The needs, desires, and attitudes of these sprawling liberal metroplexes are in sharp contrast to those of our local rural county as they are in many other counties in the state of California. Socialist overregulation of businesses, businesses and industries has destroyed almost all free enterprise, displaced our workforce, and made government itself the only viable industry of Delmar County. Perhaps it is time to, yeah.
I'm gonna cut you off there. You're already at four minutes and, uh, you know, I, I think it's unfair that people write these long editorials uh, and think they can have it read in public comment when it's over the three-minute, uh, mark. So they need to be, they need to consolidate their thoughts. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there. You've been over four minutes. Uh, and I, and you read pretty quickly. I can't imagine anybody reading it any faster than still being able to understand it. So let's move on to the next public comment title.
Don't have any more written, so I will see if anybody raises their hand online. Um, and Chair, I'm not seeing any hand, hands raised.
Okay. With that, I will close the public, uh, comment period, and we will move on to the next agenda item, which is, uh, item number thirteen, approve the clinical services manager position for the behavioral health branch, uh, to start at range sixty-five step C. The effective date of the hire is June twenty-sixth. Now I would be looking for a motion.
To approve?
I have a motion.
Second.
Had a second. Is there any public comment on this item, Kylie?
I'm gonna give it just a couple seconds. And Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan? And Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move on to budget transfers now. We have, uh, budget transfer oh-six dash oh-two, oh-six dash oh-four, oh-six dash oh-five, oh-six dash oh-six, and oh-six dash oh-eight.
Move to approve, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
Chair, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a moment of personal privilege. Um, you know, I've been thinking over how we can show our support for law enforcement. And I think, at this point, I think Supervisor Gitlin had a good point, that we can do this with a resolution of support, so the entire public knows exactly where we stand as far as public safety. It's not just enough that we approve individual items. I think it's time that we showed the entire community where the board stands as far as public safety. And so at this point, I'm going to agree with Supervisor Gitlin that we need to show this with a resolution, and I'm hoping that you'll put this on the calendar. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, if, if I may, um, if, if Supervisor Berkowitz is willing to be patient, we have a meeting coming up later this week, where the entire board will be able to weigh in very unanimously, I hope, with potentially an initiative which would speak very loud and clear to both Mister Gitlin and Supervisor Gitlin and Supervisor Berkowitz's point. Um, I don't see a need for a resolution proclamation at that time. I don't think this board could take any more of a step than that, that shows the unanimous support for law enforcement and public safety overall within our community, including fire. And I think that being said by our board during that meeting would go a long ways to showing this public exactly where we stand. But that's just my opinion, Supervisor Berkowitz. Love to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, you know, considering I have not seen that agenda for our special meeting, so I'm really not clear what's going to be involved. Be that so said, so we can today stand and show our support for law enforcement and not leave it to some other agenda, which we have yet to see.
Yeah, I, I'm just asking for your patience, Supervisor Berkowitz. It is Thursday in two days that we'll have this discussion. And, uh, if you still feel as strongly as you do that a proclamation or resolution supporting law enforcement at that time is needed, then I'll be more than willing to come on board and help support that. But at that time, let's make that decision then, if we could, please.
Yeah, and.
Chairman, I'd like to be recognized.
And, and I'd just like to chime in, uh, at this point in time, uh, that, uh, you know, I haven't seen anything written up. If somebody wants to write something up and present it, uh, I'll take a look at it. But at this point in time, uh, I, uh, am not, uh, I, I have to go along with, uh, with Supervisor Howard. Uh, at this point, uh, I, I don't want to get into some controversial battle that is not there, because this board is not there. We are in support of our law enforcement. We have just shown that on the item that was before us, and we have been in the past, and we will continue to be in the future. Uh, so Roger, go ahead.
These are unprecedented times we're in. Never in my history of being on this earth have I seen such virulence and attack against law enforcement. It's under siege, and it's endemic. It's all across the country. And now, and I appreciate that we do have an agenda item that we're gonna be discussing Thursday, but I think now is the time to put in writing, in writing, a support of the job these fine people do to protect us from chaos. There's a very thin line between chaos and civilization. And as I say, these are unprecedented times we're in, and I hope we revisit this issue of having a resolution of support for all of the first responders that I mentioned, and I think I may have left out fire departments, et cetera, for the jobs they do in keeping us safe. So thank you for considering that as we move forward, and we'll see what happens at our Thursday special meeting.
If you have something that you want to write up and submit, and it doesn't get into a whole bunch of, of us against them type of stuff, uh, and it strictly, uh, is in support and just says that, uh, I am all in favor of that. But I don't want to get into this, uh, whole matter that we seem to be involved with the things that are going on throughout the rest of the country, because that's not what's happening here. Uh, but I certainly am in support of our, uh, uh, emergency services and, uh, health and safety, uh, people that are out there. So anyway.
Chairman, just, just to respond.
Item number nineteen, uh, approve and accept the, uh, independent audit performed by Patel and Associates for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, as requested by the auditor controller. Is the auditor controller on? Does he want to say anything?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, this is our annual yearly audit, kind of our, uh, report card financially for the year. Um, I'm happy to announce we had, uh, no findings this year. Everything looked in order. And we're looking forward to next year continuing the same financial, uh, health, so to speak.
Move to approve and accept. Thank you. A motion?
Second.
And I have a second. And is there any public comment?
Chair, I'm just gonna give it a couple more seconds.
Okay.
And I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so with that, if there are no more comments on this item, uh, or questions, uh, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now, moving on to item number twenty, uh, discuss and take, uh, action as necessary to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year recommended budgets as presented by departments, and two, approve the position list, uh, request for wireless device stipends as provided in the adopted wireless device policy. Uh, and three, direct the budget team to continue to research and analyze all available cost-saving options for direct departments that no fixed asset purchases shall be allowed prior to the adoption of the final budget without Board of Supervisors approval. And five, duck, direct, uh, departments that no budget transfers will be allowed, that transfer funds from salaries and benefits to any other expense line item unless determined to be, uh, an emergency by the county administrator and auditor controller, and six, accept the recommended children's budget as presented and direct staff as necessary. Jay?
So this is the first step and first action of the board through the budget process. Uh, to reiterate, as I do every year, um, this is a, an interim spending plan that would be put in place until such time as the balanced budget is brought before the board and the public hearings are take, take place later in September. Um, the next step in, in all of this process is for the closeout of the nineteen-twenty fiscal year by the auditor controller, and then we will know actual costs associated with the previous budget and what our fund balance that we may be able to roll over will be. That will reduce the three-point-two million dollars and, uh, hopefully significantly, and then we will have a final push on how we will, on what we will need to either cut or any other revenue projections that might be appropriate. Uh, we've met with all of the departments to discuss each one of their lines and their budgets. Primarily, the focus is on the general fund. And ultimately, that's what the three-point-two represents. It's a deficit at this time on requested budgets by the departments. Uh, we go through that, and we discuss with each one of the department heads uh, where we may be able to adjust, whether that's revenue or expenditure. And ultimately, as I mentioned, we will be bringing a balanced budget before the board. There are a number of factors that we'll be looking at over the next few months. Uh, the state budget is not yet approved, although there is a budget agreement, and there are some summaries that are coming out right now. I think those will have, uh, positive impact, impact on uh, our non-general fund departments more than our general fund. Uh, the state is not, uh, passing much additional funding on to general fund services. The, uh, other, uh, legislation that might be of an assistance is through the federal government in regards to any type of offsetting, uh, revenue that might come for the COVID-nineteen response and loss of revenue. There are some positives that come out of the discussions. Uh, we won't know until July, at, at the earliest, whether or not that package comes forward, but there is, um, incentive for both the Republicans and the Democrats to, uh, provide some funding so that that offsets impact to the national, uh, economy. And there is a, a significant push by the business industry to do that, and like I said, it's also bipartisan. When this report was written, uh, obviously, we don't have, uh, the year end, nor did we know what exact businesses would be open before the year end, so there will be some revenue projections that will certainly be, uh, reviewed and addressed. And hopefully, as we go through this process, um, some of the impacts, um, will be, be able to be limited for the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, primarily losses in revenue to the motel tax. Uh, we also had uh, losses, uh, or under projections in yield tax due to the redwood market. From what it appears, um, I've reached out to Green Diamond, who's our biggest, uh, producer, to find out what they're now projecting for the next year. Um, it does look like they have again ramped up production. In addition, our one percent sales tax, uh, is also, we're at about seventy-one percent at this point, and will be slightly under our projections going into, uh, the end of the year. There are a couple of other minor, um, revenues that we'll be reviewing, and I believe will be able to be changed to the positive. So as we go through this, um, ultimately, like I said, September will be the, um, the final balance budget being brought forward to the board during the obligated public hearings, but there will be another update as we get to the year end to go over some of the changes that we've made prior to getting to that final push. If there are any significant changes that require the board to take action, we'll do that before the public hearing as an update, and then go forward from there. So if there are any questions, the auditor is on as well as myself and the Assistant C A.
Okay, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Sorry about that, Chair. I didn't realize I was muted. Um, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, if there are no questions or comments, uh, Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number twenty-one, approve and authorize that Chair to sign, uh, and send a letter of support for A B thirty seventy-four, which will protect Californians and North Coast residents who live in high-fire hazard areas by modernizing defensible space protections through the creation of a third defensible space zone called Ember Resistance Zone, as requested by Supervisor Howard. Chris?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, as you may recall, we did discuss this last year, and, um, I know CSAC and R C R C are fully involved in this legislation, especially within our rural areas. Um, in particular, I received, uh, requests and calls from Green Diamond this week to support the legislation. And I brought on board today, uh, Yana Balakovic from UC Cooperative Extension, who has been instrumental over the last two years in helping to craft this legislation from learned experiences, and I want the board to be fully aware of the changes and amendments that have taken place since the last legislation after it actually hit the governor's desk and was vetoed. So, Yana, if you So, Yana, if you don't mind, could you brief the board on, uh, this package?
Yes, good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Great. All right, great. Well, thank you, Chair Hemmingson. Thank you, Supervisor Howard, members of the board and, uh, staff for this opportunity to share a bit about what, uh, what this is about. While I'm a forester, I also have a unique skill set in a field we call home hardening, which is really looking at the construction and design details respective to how a home is built and how it will likely survive wildfire, as well as in defensible space. And I've been involved in evaluations of, of home loss, both in Paradise and Redding with a car fire and, uh, in the, uh, Redwood Valley area in Ukiah and in, um, in Santa Rosa. And what this has all illustrated is some of the experiences that I had, uh, as a survivor of the Oakland Hills Fire, uh, more than twenty years ago. And so, really, what we've learned is that, um, our defensible space guidance fundamentally needs to change to both save lives and to save property. And we're in a, we're in an interesting place right now in that we don't have uniform messaging at a state level to talk about defensible space. And you see that both national and state organizations are shifting their policy guidance and their, um, educational campaigns and their strategies and their inspection programs. Uh, but CAL FIRE is unable to move in that direction without change in state policy. Um, and that is because the Public Resources Code forty-two ninety-one is what dictates, uh, what they do. Uh, so this bill, um, is an attempt to essentially update and modernize the defensible space guidance, uh, for California. As Supervisor Howard mentioned, it did pass the legislature last year and was vetoed by the governor with a very unclear veto message. So this is a second attempt. Um, it's widely supported throughout California by fire professional organizations, cities, municipalities, uh, as well as, um, national organizations and state organizations, such as the California Fire State Council. Um, and what it will do is it basically will stimulate a process where the Board of Forestry will create the enabling language, uh, that corresponds with this. So, uh, this essentially approves a process to move forward where we can have a comprehensive discussion about where the limitations are and where some of the challenges are. So fundamentally, this bill will save lives and property, and it would be great to have, um, the Delmar Board, uh, support this. Humboldt Board supported it last week, and so we're just trying to build a, a coalition of supporters around it.
Great, Yana. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I appreciate you bringing up the Oakland Hills Fire. Uh, you, you know, uh, I brought this up several different times, and we haven't learned much since then. And I thought that would be the fire that would get a lot of this stuff kick-started. And, and, and we've had catastrophe after catastrophe happen, and, and it's been very difficult to get movement on this. Appreciate your efforts, uh, and the efforts of the legislature to, to try to get something through. Uh, it's something that we do need to have, so I appreciate all that. Uh, so with that, uh, if there's no question, are there any questions for Yana or Supervisor Howard at this time?
Motion to approve, Chair?
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any public comment, Kylie, on this item?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, with that, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Uh, and, uh, thank you all. Kylie, did I miss anything?
You did not.
Okay, with that, then we are adjourned. Uh, we're going to have a, uh, special meeting, I believe, on Thursday at eleven. Is that right, Jay?
It's at ten AM.
Ten AM, okay. Thanks, Kylie. So we will adjourn, uh, until that special session. Our next regular meeting will be July fourteenth. Uh, thank you all for participating.
Thank you.